Hello and welcome to this joint hearing on enforcement of housing and building codes. This is a joint hearing of the Senate Committee on Housing, Construction and Community Development and the Committee on Investigations and Government Operations. I'm Brian Kavanaugh, Chair of the Housing Committee, and I'm joined by Senator James Scoofus, who's Chair of the Investigations and Government Operations Committee, as well as Senators May and Jackson, who are members of the Housing Committee. And I'm actually not sure.
(inaudible)
Okay. So, we're going to begin with witnesses momentarily, but just let me just say as a general matter that, first of all, we appreciate those who are able to testify in person today. This hearing was put together in relatively short notice, and many people made some effort to be here today, and so we greatly appreciate that. In addition, we do expect to get written testimony from another, a number of sources who have responded to the notice and said, while they're not able to be physically present today, they do have input on this legislation. We are going to be considering a package of 11 bills, which were included in the hearing notice, and this hearing is really the latest in a series of activities that these committees have undertaken on this matter. I want to particularly thank the Senator Scoofus and the Investigations and Government Operations Committee, who led a very thorough investigation last year of the code enforcement practices of four localities as a sample of how code enforcement works around the state, and generated a great many insights into what works and what does not. And that investigation culminated in a hearing that we held last May on this topic in Newburgh, New York, and a subsequent report that was the product of investigations of government operations and joined by the Housing Committee. And that report came out in August, and many of the bills we see before us today are pursuant to recommendations of that report. So, without further ado, I think I'll let Senator Scoofus say, and I note we've been joined by Senators Alner Myrie, also a member of the Housing Committee. But Senator Scoofus?
Thank you, Senator Kavanaugh, and it's been a pleasure working with you and your team and the Housing Committee, really for much of the past year, quite frankly, at this point on this issue. And I think, leading into this issue, code enforcement is something of an esoteric field for a lot of New Yorkers, unless you're sort of immediately touched by housing and building code, fire code, you know, you're pulling out a permit yourself as a property owner, or you're a firefighter, or you're a code enforcement official. Unless you're one of those types of stakeholders, this is something that is not maybe super top of mind for the average New Yorker. But I think, as we saw in the joint investigation, you know, this is an issue that has been neglected, quite frankly, at all levels of government for a very long time. And whether people realize it or not, it has a real, serious, imminent effect, and in some cases, threat, to the 19-plus million people who live in New York State. And we did look at four municipalities as a sample. We saw what was working, what was not working. But I think this is really, now that we're in the 2020 session, this is really the first time, at least as far as I know, that the state government, in this case, the Senate, is shining a light on this issue and is going to be taking some really enormous positive steps to make New York State a safer state for its residents, for its first responders, and, quite frankly, for property owners as well, whether they like it or not. And so, we do have a package of 11 proposed bills. This did come together quite quickly, this hearing, but I want to thank Senator Kavanaugh for really leading the effort to scramble and organize this, because it is important that we hear from a lot of the folks that we heard back in May, and perhaps some others, about what they think about this package. Perhaps there are some tweaks that we can make between now and when we advance the package in the Senate. But make no mistake that this is one of the early priorities of the New York State Senate after the work that we did as part of this investigation. And I do want to thank my team, who was instrumental during those seven or so months. But this will be coming up in the next few weeks, and I thank everyone for joining us who's here, as well as the number of groups who are submitting written comments as well. I look forward to the testimony.
Thank you. Do any other senators have any preliminary remarks? Okay, hearing done. I'm going to ask Kate Powers, Director of Legislative Affairs, for our state Attorney General to come up as our first witness. And just while she's getting settled, I just note that we're joined, we mentioned all the senators, but we're joined by staff who worked very hard to get us to this point, including Amber Marshall, who is counsel to the Housing Committee, and Chris Friend, who is the finance analyst to the Housing Committee, and Andrew Stanley, who is legislative counsel in my office, and Daniel Mosher, who is also of my office, and Danielle Sagal, also of my office. So, we thank them for their work putting this together. So, without further ado, Kate Powers?
All right. The mics on? So, good afternoon, Chairs Kavanaugh, Scoofus, and members of the committee. I thank you for allowing me to share testimony on behalf of Attorney General James today. As we are all aware, housing stability is a chronic issue across New York State, as residents in urban, suburban, and rural communities alike struggle to find quality housing at prices they can afford. Our office sees countless examples in all areas of the state where renters who cannot find safe, decent, affordable housing are forced to live in substandard conditions because that is the only option of having a roof over their head. Homeowners suffer deteriorating vacant and abandoned properties, dragging down property values, and causing safety hazards in their communities. For their part, towns and cities want to do the right thing but struggle with limited resources and infrastructure to address safety concerns and respond to the needs of their communities. But, as experience tells us, they are often unable to address the problem sufficiently. Many of these concerns can be relieved with improved code enforcement, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all for recognizing this important issue. Improving housing code enforcement is a significant priority of Attorney General James. Over the past four years, the Office of the Attorney General dedicated some $33 million to more than 80 New York municipalities to support code enforcement initiatives through the city's Rise and Zombie Grants Program. These funds generated by settlements resulting from our office's lawsuits against large financial institutions following the Great Recession have brought over $100 million in settlement funds to support quality housing and improve code enforcement in New York State. These funds have also gone to support landbakes and community land trusts, which are integral partners in helping communities confront the challenges of problem and vacant properties. Through our engagement in this work, the Office of the Attorney General has had the opportunity to work directly with municipalities and communities to address the major challenges they face related to code enforcement and housing quality. We recognize the challenges that communities face in ensuring safe, stable housing for their residents, and we strongly believe that improving code enforcement is essential to solving the problem. We have a few remarks on just a couple of the bills. Senate 7288 would establish a statewide residential rental registry that includes information about rental units, such as number and type of code violations, and any findings of harassment. Such a registry would help municipalities and state governments keep track of problem landlords and identify problem landlords who are active in multiple municipalities. Similar types of registries exist in the state, and they have been proven to be effective at identifying and tracking of problematic units and landlords. They also improve code enforcement efforts by ensuring that the list of units subject to inspections are as complete as possible. Senate Bill 7287 would establish a state code enforcement office within the Office of the Secretary of State, and would, among other things, establish a standard for an adequate number of code enforcement staff within a locality, authorize the state to monitor a local government's compliance with code standards, and create an Office of State Code Enforcement on Bud's Person to resolve complaints. This could greatly improve enforcement capacity. Many code offices are severely under-resourced and do not have adequate staff to meet the code enforcement needs of their community. Setting requirements for code enforcement officers based on population and geography and creating a centralized state agency to provide assistance and oversight would have a beneficial impact on communities and could help the state understand trends related to code enforcement. However, one essential element to proper code enforcement that I would be remiss not to mention is the need for adequate funding to localities to carry out this important function. Many municipalities lack the funding, infrastructure, and staff to enforce the building code. The final bill, Senate 7291, would require the Secretary of State to issue rules that establish minimum standards for code enforcement personnel and training. Code enforcement officers are tasked with making serious decisions that affect the quality and safety of building residents, as well as the greater community. It is the utmost importance that code enforcement officers are properly trained to make these decisions. Providing uniform training to code enforcement officers would not only systematize code enforcement across the state, but ensure that officers are equipped with the tools and resources they need when confronting hard decisions, such as vacating a property and displacing the family that lives there. This training should also encompass community engagement and encourage code enforcement officers to build connections in the community with which they work. Residents are often the first to notice code issues, so working directly with communities and residents should be a priority for all code enforcement offices. Before I conclude, I would like to take a minute to touch on the importance of equity in code enforcement. Our experience tells us that landlords who run afoul of building and safety codes often do not intend to be bad landlords. They are often well-intentioned individuals or companies that experience financial or other hardship that impacts the quality of their buildings. One only needs to look at the number of foreclosure cases in New York to recognize there are many owners in deep financial distress. Unfortunately, these owners are often the people who have recurring code problems in their properties. Through our work with towns and cities, we have seen that creating effective code enforcement practices is not always a one-size-fits-all approach. When drafting new legislation, especially regarding increased penalties and fines, we must consider what impact these rules will have on communities, particularly those with language or other barriers. I'd like to, once again, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I am not a subject matter expert, but I am happy to take any questions you have back to the experts in my office.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for your presence and for all of the work of your colleagues at the Attorney General's Office. Just, we would, first of all, again, we appreciate your testimony. We would request that, you know, this, as many, some of these bills have been pending for a while, some of them are more recently introduced, but if your office, if the attorneys at your office have kind of technical suggestions or concerns, or, you know, things that you think particularly, work particularly well, we would appreciate that, that level of feedback, but recognizing that we wouldn't, you know, we weren't not expecting that from you today. Can you speak a little more about the, are there, as we go forward, are there aspects of these bills or of our efforts on code enforcement generally that we should be particularly cognizant of, that are responsive to your concern about equity and sort of landlords who have, who may simply have a physical or financial inability to comply?
Yeah. You know, again, we're happy to set up a call with you or your staff sometime in the near future and discuss these issues in detail. We have people, dedicated staff in New York who are really passionate about this and who would be very happy to have that conversation with you.
Good, we appreciate that. Any questions from anybody else on the panel? Senator May?
Thank you, yeah, thank you for your testimony. So, I represent Syracuse, and in Syracuse, retaliation is one of the big issues that we face, where people are afraid to report code violations because landlords retaliate. And I know that that's against the law, and so it was in our recent law, but it was in there before that. Do you see any of these bills as helping to circumvent that problem, or is there something else that's necessary to really stop that, so that tenants can report problems?
I think we had some discussions in the bill, perhaps the one with the, creating the office in the Secretary of State, if there was a more systematic effort where code enforcement was more of an automatic thing and wouldn't rely on residents reporting. Something along those lines, we think, would likely help retaliation. But again, I can take it back to the experts and see if they have additional suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
And just before Senator Scoofus, I just note we've been joined by Senator Comrie. Welcome, Senator Comrie.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Just a brief question, as someone who obviously interfaces with the judiciary a great deal, although not on condemnation issues, I'm wondering if you have any comment on the particular bill that pulls condemnation out of Supreme Court and places those proceedings in more local courts? We received feedback that going to Supreme Court for condemnation is costly, more onerous, takes a longer period of time to resolve, and I'm just wondering if you have any insight on that issue?
Is, that's Senate 7300?
Seventy-three oh one.
Seventy-three oh one. I think we did review the bill. I don't think we have particular feedback at this point, but again, I'm happy to take it back and see if...
No red flags?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But let me, let me confirm, yeah.
Thank you.
I admire Senator Scoofus's efforts to pin you down on that. We appreciate your feedback now or subsequently. Other questions, or Senator Jackson?
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming in, on behalf of our Attorney General. I believe, did you speak on Bill Number S-1714, and that's to amend the executive law in relation to violations of Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code? Did you speak on that particular bill?
I did not. That is a bill we reviewed, and I believe it has to do with penalties, increasing penalties. And again, you know, as I alluded to in my testimony, we prefer, you know, in many cases, often a different approach than penalties, but we could look specifically again if you had a specific question.
Okay, the reason why I ask that, because in reading, a penalty, obviously, is very important where there's a failure, especially in this situation, where it says, and I'm reading the justification for this legislation, by Senator Brooks from Long Island, "In recent years, there has been a proliferation of buildings that have been altered in ways that create dangerous situations for both tenants and first responders. These building alterations can impede egress from the building and prevent a safe evacuation during emergencies. In many instances, these unsafe conditions have placed residents and firefighters at serious risk in injury or death." And in fact, I remember a couple of years ago, because alteration in the apartment, the floor plan, a firefighter died as a result of that. And so, I was wondering whether or not, in reviewing, whether or not the Attorney General was supportive of this particular bill, which talked about where the egress is posing serious risk or injury or death to residents and firefighters. So, and if you can speak on that now, and if you can't, I ask you to look at that, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Again, it is one of the bills we reviewed, but not one of the bills I was asked to comment on this morning, so I will take it back.
And the other one is a bill that I submitted, which established a 60-day deadline to remove or remedy code violations and dangerous conditions in an Article 78 proceeding. And obviously, you know, when there's an Article 78 proceeding, that means that it's gone beyond the tenant communicating with the owner, "Listen, I got a problem here," or the tenants overall. It comes to a point, a boiling point, where the tenants take the owner of the building to court in order to take control of the building because the owners have failed to do what's necessary. And I know a very, very specific example of 452 Fort Washington Avenue, in which a 78, years ago, a 78 administrator was assigned to the building to make necessary repairs and so forth and so on. And I'm just, to me, these are extremely important bills in which, for example, where tenants have been suffering because land, the owner of the building, or their management office, whoever it is, has failed to take appropriate steps to remedy the necessary things that are in violation, where the court says, "I agree with you, tenants. I'm assigning a 78 administrator to administer the building because the landlord, the owner, has failed to act appropriately." I was just curious on whether or not...
Senator, I appreciate the points you're making. I, you know, I'm not sure we reviewed those bills as closely as some of the others, so we'll do that.
I was just wondering whether or not the Attorney General is supportive of these legislations that tend to correct violations and, which could cause injury or death. And so, that's why I was asking.
Right, yeah. We'll certainly follow up with you soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Guarding some applause from the audience there, Senator Jackson.
Not me, but I mean, these are serious issues.
We also, I just note we've been joined by Senator Biagi. Any other questions or comments from the panel? Senator Comrie?
Oh, this doesn't move anymore? Okay. Thank you. Sorry I came late, and I didn't hear your testimony. I don't know if you opined on my bill, just to be partisan as well. Senate Bill 2813 regarding the need to ensure that fire extinguishers are placed in all multiple dwelling buildings. You know, I've had a few fires in my district where the landlords failed to provide even the basic fire safety measures and didn't even put fire extinguishers in the buildings. And I didn't know if you had a chance to take a look at that or speak on that.
Yeah, that is one of the bills I addressed in my testimony today. I don't, I don't think we have any objection. I'm not sure we have a lot, you know, of comments to offer, but I can double-check.
And then, just a second question, dealing with HCR, and do, can you explain how do you coordinate with HCR regarding your efforts when you're looking at these code violations? And if there's a new path that has been established that is within the last budget since HCR had been given new monies to provide better services?
Yeah, I think before you arrived, I explained that I'm not the subject matter expert on this, but we're happy to schedule a follow-up call in the near future to discuss that issue and any other issue you'd like to.
Thank you. Is that part of today's agenda?
Yeah, it is. There are 11 bills, and I think that maybe some other people testifying today will have some expertise on that, but it is, it was included in the notice and it's in your package.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, we thank you very much for your testimony and look forward to ongoing conversations with you and your office, and give our regards to the Attorney General.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thanks. Next up, we have Rebecca Garrard of the statewide, she's the statewide housing coordinator for Citizen Action of New York.
While we're turning over, can I ask the sound folks, there's a lot of feedback here when Senator Comrie talks, we're hearing it a second later coming after this. I don't know if there's any way to change that.
I think everybody should.
Okay, we're getting the thumbs up from the sound people, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we are going...
Testing, testing.
And we are going to, we are gonna, there's a, I think we didn't get this started for the first witness, but we're gonna run a 10-minute clock for people's testimony in chief. We will then have Q and A, which will not be time-limited, but just to give people a sense of how long we're going, so that we can all catch the last train. But we appreciate everybody's patience. So, again, without further ado, do you want to, just, also, to just say your name and your affiliation for the record on the mic at the beginning of your testimony, we appreciate that as well.
Absolutely. I am Rebecca Garrard. I am the Campaigns Manager for Housing Justice with Citizen Action of New York and the Upstate Coordinator for the Housing Justice for All Coalition. I would like to first thank the Senate Housing Chair Kavanaugh and Senator Scoofus for holding today's hearings, which provide the opportunity for input to be provided in regard to the proposed legislation regarding code enforcement. Everyone at this hearing today has previously heard testimony in regards to the experience of tenants who live in conditions which no one would consider safe or humane. Through my work, people have shared their stories with me around this subject and opened their homes to me to allow me to see firsthand the injustices to which they are subjected. That is both a privilege and a responsibility that I take very seriously. I've spoken to renters who lack access to basic utilities, such as heat or hot water. I've met with tenants who have shown me photographs of walls covered in mold or holes in the ceiling or roof. I've sat with children, sat with more children than I could have ever imagined, who are suffering the side effects of lead poisoning, as their parents described to me how their very home was the cause of this harm. The types of stories are too numerous to recount, and the areas they encompass are too widespread to be able to blame on a regional insufficiency. There is really only one commonality among these stories, and that is no local enforcement mechanisms were either available to be utilized or were chosen to be utilized in order to prevent these circumstances. I have read through the proposed pieces of legislation which are relevant to today's hearing. There are some aspects of these which I am somewhat supportive, such as mandating fire extinguishers, S-2813, setting time restrictions for core-ordered repairs, S-3320, and creating an oversight structure within the Office of the Secretary of State, S-7287. There are other aspects, such as mandating the use of stronger materials to board up buildings, S-1726A, hastening the penalty process, S-7301, and creating or increasing penalties for violations, S-1714 and S-4938, which I believe will be either ineffectual or will have unintended consequences. However, there is one truth that I believe applies to all of these pieces of the proposed legislation. Without good cause eviction protections, there cannot be any piece of legislation which truly creates change for our most impacted communities. As I know you are all aware, there is a current piece of legislation which provides these protections, and that is the Good Cause Eviction Bill, sponsored by Senator Julia Salazar. The Good Cause Eviction Bill would provide vital protections to tenants which, although not a solution to the crisis that exists within our code enforcement system statewide, would be an important first step in allowing tenants to advocate for repairs and speak out against unsafe conditions without fear of retaliation. The reality is that tenants live in actual and very valid fear of receiving a no-fault eviction if they complain about situations which have the potential to or are currently causing them or their families imminent harm. Predatory landlords wield this power to ensure that they can maximize their profits off of those who can least afford it, while ensuring that they can continue to make chronic disinvestment of properties an extremely lucrative business strategy. Without providing tenants the basic protection of being safe from retaliation, no system we create can or will be effective, because the people we will need to alert us to the problems, those on the front lines of the crisis, will continue to be silenced by fear and intimidation. I appreciate your attention to this crucial matter and urge you to incorporate the passage of good cause eviction into any conversation you have about meaningfully addressing the problem of code enforcement in New York. Thank you for your consideration of this testimony.
Thank you for testimony, and just, and thank you also for, you know, obviously, we're now in the 13th month of a conversation about how to address many housing issues throughout the state through the legislative process, and, you know, you and your organization have been very instrumental in ensuring that tenants on the ground in communities across the state are aware of these conversations and are having input, so we do very much appreciate that. We, as you know, put some provisions in place last year through the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act...
Yes.
...that are intended to address the issue of retaliation, including increasing, making it... making it explicit that one can't retaliate, not only for a formal complaint, but also for complaining to the landlord themselves about conditions that might be violations of the warranty liability and other elements. Obviously, those things are continuing, you know, continuing to play out. You know, they're going-- like many provisions of that very broad act have gone into effect, you know, over the last seven months. And we'll be monitoring very closely to see how they affect. And I also just note that many of us are-- Senator Salazar has very ably championed the Good Cause Bill, and many of us also are joining her in sponsoring that. Can you speak a little bit about the extent to which-- when a complaint is made, you think localities have the resources to address code violations? Putting aside the very important point you make that tenants are, you know, might be reluctant to make a complaint. But just from your experience and your members' experiences in--
Sure, sort of boots-on-the-ground walking through. Sure. So to start with the new protections that were added in under HSTPA, I think, you know, we appreciate that strides were made, but the reality is that we're still in a system where a tenant has to raise as a defense and prove that it was retaliatory, right? And so what we need is a system where the property owner has to prove that there was cause. And those are fundamentally two very, very different things. Very different things. And so that fear will continue to exist until the burden is placed on the property owner to show that there was cause for eviction. Second, we know that code resources are completely prioritized towards the wealthiest, whitest neighborhoods. And the crumbs, right, that are left in terms of resources in any neighborhood are then dispersed to the communities that need it the most, that are facing the most egregious situations. And so not only is the attention lacking in terms of the rate at which inspections happen, the acceptability of repairs that's tolerated, that system, that standard, is not uniform. If we're looking at wealthy, white neighborhoods, where you have very fast inspections to ensure that luxury development is being approved quickly and that the quality of development is up to par. So we see our most impacted communities being ignored, and then when they're not ignored, repairs being checked off as acceptable that are clearly not acceptable and, in fact, a severe, a severe safety hazard.
Thank you. I'm going to open up questions from colleagues. Senator Scoofus.
You just mentioned that funds are distributed unevenly. What funds are you talking about, or what funds are you referring to and distributed by who?
So whatever funds a municipality allotts towards code, when we make complaints about the fact that there hasn't been an inspection on a property in X amount of time, they say, well, we're short-staffed. And yet, the reality is that we know that COs are issued to new luxury development quite quickly, and inspections on disinvested properties happen not only not quickly, but almost never. So--
Well, there's no such thing as a regular inspection unless it's as a condition of getting a license as part of a rental registry in a specific municipality--
Oh, that's correct.
--a town or a village or city. You can't just, you know, inspect a house at will. So I'm just trying to get to the core of what you're referring to about this unevenness.
So let me just say we're in favor of rental registries. So I would say to you that if you are-- let's take the new law that was passed, right, that says if there's not a CO, you can't evict somebody, right? And if you need a CO for new development, right? So those are two instances where you need a CO, correct? You have a luxury development. That CO is going to be issued, and I'm going to tell you that we're going to see that the quality of that building is going to be up to par, the safety standards are going to be quite good, and we are not going to see things such as a paint of coat slapped over lead as acceptable when that CO is issued. If somebody's looking for a CO in a disinvested building so that they're going to be able to utilize a mechanism such as eviction, right, a slumlord, you're going to have an entirely different standard--
Do you have data that backs that up? I mean, you know, you're saying this. I haven't seen actual data that speaks to what you're talking about. I'd love to see it if you have it.
So I could get you data, but Senator Scoofus, with all due respect, you ran the code hearings last year, and I believe you listened to the experiences of tenants across Upstate. I would believe that the stories that you heard during those hearings absolutely mirror the testimony that I'm giving you today.
We ran a seven-month investigation, and the point that we're at here is a result of the fact that we found serious problems within the code enforcement system here in New York State. And so to suggest otherwise, we wouldn't be here if it was otherwise.
We're in complete agreement.
However, you're alleging that neighborhood by neighborhood, there is unequal enforcement of the code within the same municipality. And what I'm asking for is if you have data that demonstrates that, I would love to see it, because then that's something else that we can consider moving forward as part of a package or otherwise.
I would be happy to try to pull data together for that for you, but I would also say to you that I would ask you to-- you could easily walk into any municipality, pull a CO that was just issued within the last six months in a poor, black neighborhood and in a wealthy, white neighborhood, and I tell you that you would find the standard by which they found acceptable to issue that CO to be vastly different, and I stand by that.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to get you data.
Thank you.
Senator May.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick question, because in your opening remarks, you said-- I think there were four bills that you said you had very strong reservations about. Are you going to provide us with details about what those reservations are?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. So my concern around bills that increase penalties when-- or speed up the implementation of penalties is that that tends to only have a negative impact on the tenants who live in the property. So what we see often is that that system is basically seen as cost of business for bad property owners, and so it doesn't result in the remediation of the problems within the property, but they will accept the fine, pass the fine onto the tenant in the form of a rent increase. And so we actually see tenants who remain in these conditions that are in need of repair, but now simply paying a higher rent. So we're open to the idea of penalties that look like rent rebates. So if you're not going to make the repairs that you've been ordered to make, that tenants are allowed to live rent-free until you make those repairs. We think that could be a really powerful motivator for serial offenders when it comes to being cited for violations. We think we need to be more creative in the types of penalties that we issue in order to actually affect change in these situations, because we don't believe strictly financial penalties has been successful up to this point.
Thank you.
Senator Jackson.
First, let me thank you for coming in and giving testimony. In your testimony, when you were reading and discussing it, you alluded to that this legislation is not going to be-- at least, that's the way I understood it-- not going to be helpful for those that are most vulnerable. Who, in your opinion, are the most vulnerable ones that this legislation would not help?
From my travels across the state, it is predominantly Black and Brown communities who are impacted by slumlords, right, by real estate owners who profit off of disinvestment and those who live in extreme poverty. And so these are people who often do not have resources to go to court with an attorney to fight back against a retaliatory eviction and who live in, as I said, valid fear of any sort of self-advocacy. And so--
Is that because of the most of the places or all of the places that they live in, you don't have good cause eviction--
That's exactly right.
Is that what it is?
We have no-fault evictions that are completely legal for unregulated tenants. And so they know it is a fact, and it happens. If they complain, they will 100% be on the receiving end at some point of a no-fault eviction, and that means they're out on the street. And so they have no choice but to suffer through this.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to seek clarity.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that clarifying question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the panel? Okay. With that, again, thank you very much for your testimony and all your work. And we look forward to continuing--
Thank you so much for all your work.
Great. Okay, so next up, we have Steve McDaniel and Justin Schwartz. Technical difficulties with a very old form of technology. Okay, I don't know if you have preference which to go for, maybe Mr. McDaniel first and then Mr. Schwartz. Is that--
Sure.
Okay, great. So again, there's a 10-minute clock that you can see, and we ask you to keep your testimony within that, and obviously, we will take written documentation if you have more to say. So again, if you could begin by identifying yourself and your affiliation for the record, and then in your testimony.
I appreciate that. Senator Kavanaugh and members of the Senate and staff, of course. My name is Steve McDaniel, and on behalf of the entire New York State Codes Coalition, which consists of the Association of Fire Districts of the State of New York, the New York State Building Officials Conference, the Firemen's Association of the State of New York, the New York State Association of Fire Chiefs, the New York State Fire Marshals and Inspectors Association, and our nearly 60,000 members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak with you today. I cannot state enough our gratitude of your decision to involve us in this process. It is crucial to the citizens of this state. We feel that our organizations need to play a critical role in the overhaul of code enforcement in the state of New York. I have read your August 5, 2019, report in its entirety, and I applaud you in your attempts to address code enforcement in the state. It is needed. We feel the same as you. An overhaul and change is needed, and I further encourage you to not stop. The passion I'm hearing in the room just with the testimony is outstanding. I would like to take this opportunity to say that you are correct in stating that the lack of code enforcement in New York State is not a priority. It's not, and it's up to you, and only you can make that happen. I do have to say, though, that your report, you may believe, would have been thorough. There were only four municipalities used to dictate what we may begin to create legislation for the rest of the state, and I'm not sure that that is an ideal. It may be a starting point, but not necessarily ideal to create the pieces of legislation we have in front of you today. In your report, you state, and I quote, "Arguably, the most important mechanism for assisting local governments, the committee's recommendation is that the legislature and the executive work together to reinstate distribution of funds for local governments." Yet, there's nothing in the 11 bills I see here today that addresses that, which you stated is arguably your most important issue. You are correct that there are problems facing code enforcement today. However, we would love to have seen an ideal prioritization of those. When we build a home, we do not start by installing the heating system. We start by building the foundation, because without the foundation, the building will fall. You should take that same approach with code enforcement. Start with the foundation and principles, because without them, we will fail as well. Just handpicking items like a statewide rental program or landlord-provided fire extinguishers is just like starting with the heating system instead of building the foundation. You haven't addressed the foundation, so we're inevitably going to fail. The foundation of code enforcement begins exactly with what you state in your report, that code enforcement must be a priority. The priority needs to be at all levels, state, county, local governments, and the justice system. If you had expanded your investigation to a true representation across the state of New York, you would have come to the conclusion that starting with the justice system alone would do more for code enforcement than any of the pieces of legislation here today. You see, using only those four municipalities, you may have come to a false conclusion that only those problems facing those four municipalities are the ones that should be prioritized for the future. There are thousands of municipalities that have problems like understaffing and getting a judge to properly deal with code violations, both leading to the poor culture that you spoke of in your report. If you merely address just these two items, understaffing and the courts, these other issues begin to go away. With proper staffing, a municipality can achieve compliance with the minimum standards that are required by law, which in turn lessens the need for an aggressive oversight initiative. They would have staff to properly investigate complaints, conduct required inspections, conduct proper rental registry inspections, and multiple dwellings. Requiring judges and justices to treat code violations in the same manner as any other crime, to issue proper fines and judgments, and do so in a timely manner, will begin to change the poor culture that code enforcement has experienced. This will send a strong message to the violators, which in turn gains voluntary compliance sooner. And when a violation notice is issued, those violators will begin to listen. So when we discuss and look at these bills under consideration today, I urge you to keep these two questions in mind. Can you accomplish this if the municipality does not have the proper staff to do so? And secondly, will this be effective if the judges, justices, and courts ignore them? If you answer no to either one of these foundational questions, then the bills need to be put aside or withdrawn until we can address staffing in the justice system. Otherwise, we've done nothing but make ourselves feel good by putting it into law because of the "the law says so" concept. We wrote it, it's there, but nobody enforces it. We've submitted written testimony. I know we're only limited to 10 minutes, and there's another gentleman here at the table, so I won't go into that too much. The written testimony, I think I've sat there for staff. But in closing, we appreciate the forward-thinking of this committee involving us in this process, and I sincerely hope that our testimony is beneficial. We wish for the future that legislators would reach out to our organizations in the bill-writing process, both before, during, and after, so that we can work towards that common goal. Again, on behalf of the entire New York State Codes Coalition, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
So I'll just-- I have a few questions and responses, but I'm going to defer to my colleagues' thoughts. But I just note that some of these bills were written and introduced last week, and we promptly reached out to you, and that's what we're here for, is to hear from you and, you know, to take your testimony. And we will also take your more extensive written remarks into consideration. But let me let Senator--
Do you want to hear--
Or do you want to do--
First.
Yeah, so why don't we let Mr. Schwartz-- Yeah, so why don't we, yeah, why don't we let Mr. Schwartz go, and then we'll...
Do you want to ask questions? You'll ask both of them.
And then we'll do both of you. Yeah, that's great.
Okay. I want to thank you all. The only motivation I'm testifying before this committee on behalf of the Rockland County task, illegal housing and illegal private school task force, is never to have another Black Sunday that claimed the lives of three New York City firefighters, seriously injured, four others, and two of them hailed from Rockland County. Today is the 15th anniversary of Black Sunday. It was the deadliest day for FDNY since the World Trade Center attack on September 11, 2001. And particularly shocking, since two different deadly fires occurred on the same day. The Bronx fires started on the third floor of a tenement of the East 178th Street, the Grand Concourse, and may have been caused by an extension cord to a portable heating setting fire to a mattress. Three alarms were called, Engine Company 42, Ladder Company 33, Ladder Company 27, and Rescue Company 3 were involved in the fighting the fire. The alarm call was made at 7:59 on a cold, windy morning, the day after a blizzard and snow hampered the engines in reaching the end address. The closest hydrant was frozen, and some of those hoses were either frozen or cracked. The apartments had been illegally subdivided, using drywall partitions. Six firefighters on the fourth floor were trapped when the fire flashed through the door of the apartment, unable to find their way to the fire escape and decided to jump from the windows. Two were killed in the fall. John G. Bellew, Lieutenant Curtis Myron, who was in command of ladder 27, the other four, Brendan Hawley, Jeff Cool, Joe DiBarnado, Gene Stalowski, were severely injured and disabled, and had to retire. Unfortunately, DiBarnado, he died six years later, and he had been promoted to lieutenant May 2005 posthumously. Jeff Cool survived the four-story fall on that January from a burning Bronx building with illegal rooms. The former hockey player broke 13 ribs, both soldiers, his pelvis in four places, cracked bones in his spine, neck, fractured his skull in two spots. He spent nearly three weeks in a coma. He lost 72 units of blood. His body was put back together, as he says, with crazy glue and duct tape, and lived with survivor's guilt, post-traumatic stress, and Jeff can't walk well, and arthritis is taking him, is taking over his shoulders and wrists. We call him in Rockland a miracle man. What's the reasons for this? The unlawful dissecting of homes boils down to one factor, that's greed and money. These landlords buy cheap properties, hire contractors, mostly unlicensed, willing to subdivide illegally. The small rooms are rented to the tenants, many of them immigrants, for about $500. That's cash. No chets, cash. The electrical and piping work is often haphazardly done, and the homes frequently lack the smoke and carbon monoxide detectors required by law. In one Spring Valley abode, 28 people were living in a single house. The landlord was collecting about $160,000 cash, tax-free. In North Park, Stony Point, fire authorities discovered a garage converted into many tiny living quarters. Town around Polan Village is Spring Valley. The high-density sprawl, which you have said in your report, the community is leading a housing availability crisis. Unfortunately, the weapons of mass construction and its unchecked expansion has led to the dubious building and construction practices, including converting single and two-family homes into multiple dwelling units without the requisite permits and site plans. A number of private schools known as Ishivas, which were often located in a trailer or a room within a home that is designated as a single family but was subsequently converted into a multifamily property. The severe lack of available space for suitable housing, schools, and synagogues, combined with an ineffective code enforcement, resulted in a continuing development chaos. The Rockland County Illegal Housing Task Force testifies to you today that Ramapo is not meeting its responsibility of protecting its residents and first responders. They're just not. From the dangers imposed by the improper constructions, unlicensed contractors, and the seeking of forgiveness and the permissioned attitude. The current state of mistrust, and along with the history of corruption, the culture of noncompliance that plagues the town of Ramapo is now infecting, since your report, the towns surrounding villages, Spring Valley, Pomona, Chestnut Ridge, Air Mine, Kaiser, New Square, and it's still widening the continuing development chaos. Rockland Fire Service has said enough. Your bills, we all support them, every single one of them. However, you have current laws, so I was asked to ask, this committee should demand the Department of State Building and Codes to give the authority, which they do have now, give it to the county of Rockland, the county executive, to enforce the building and codes instead of the town of Ramapo. Why? Because they have their own arbitrary judges. They don't fall to the whims of an elected official. The committee should demand to have the second floor, Governor Cuomo, take the handcuffs off the State Department heads and staff to do their jobs. They supposedly have been trained, hired, to do without the political and bureaucratic interference. And yet, as we call it, bullshit. This committee should demand equal enforcement to all, not to some builders and developers. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you both for your testimony, and I do want to point out, I've gotten to work with Mr. Schwartz for some time now, and he and the group that he works with have poured an enormous amount of energy and time and resources into bringing light to this issue in Rockland County, and, you know, I'm sure my colleagues recognize the passion from which you speak, and you didn't mention it, but I will, that you're also a firefighter yourself.
Life member of Spring Valley, 42 years.
And thank you for all of that. I want to get back to Mr. McDaniel's, if I can. One sort of point of interest that I'll raise, and then perhaps a question or two. First, I recognize, and the report agrees, I believe, I can speak for everyone up here, we all agree, that a core problem here is the lack of resources that are provided to municipalities, that should have been flowing to municipalities this whole time pursuant to a surcharge that, as I'm sure you are all too aware of, a surcharge that is on these fire insurance policies that are in New York State, that have been shifted over into the general fund. So my point of information here is that we cannot appropriate funding outside of the budget. And so while I understand and sympathize and empathize with your frustration that none of these bills speak to the funding matter, that is not, this is not the appropriate time for us to address that issue. The budget will be the appropriate time for us to address that issue, and I can assure you that many of the folks up here, if not all of us, will be doing our best to try and raise that during the budget negotiations. Now, you did speak to two other sort of primary concerns that you represent in your testimony. That's understaffing and the courts, and you suggested that those are two places that we can perhaps focus our efforts on. And I would just point out that, in fact, many of these bills actually do address those two key elements. One, for example, directs the state to consider what I'll call staffing ratios for code enforcement officials. You know, during our investigation, we found out that Mount Vernon, a city of nearly 70,000 people, at the time of the investigation, had one single official enforcing code, which I don't need to tell you, puts every single resident of that city in danger, not to mention the first responders and other stakeholders. And so, when you talk about staffing, we actually are, we recognize that's a major issue, and are attempting to address that. And on the court side, there are a number of bills here, actually, that address the judicial proceedings, which we found entirely problematic when it came to code enforcement. Most notably, in my opinion, is the fact that you'd have these open code violations for many months, sometimes years, and at the end of that proceeding, when the case is closed for one reason or another, there is a $250 penalty levied against the property owner. And so, I believe, and this has nothing to do with resources from the state, this is a matter of trying to get problems fixed for the safety and betterment of the residents, the tenants, whoever are living in that building, not to mention the property values of that neighborhood and the quality of life issues that come with code violations. Core bill in this package is not just setting maximum penalties, as have been in the law for quite some time, but finally, putting in place minimum penalties for code violations so that we don't have that situation where there's a code violation open for two years, and there's a $200 fine at the end of it. This will, I believe, and most of us believe, compel a far more expeditious handling of these code violations by the property owners who are in violation. There's also another bill that tries to address the very lengthy proceedings that happen in Supreme Court with condemnations, and move some of those proceedings into county courts, city courts, that, again, can move more expeditiously or not as onerous to municipalities. And so, your message is well received, but for anyone who's listening and watching, and also, you know, perhaps for yourself, I did want to point out that we fully recognize that those are key challenges, and we actually have put together some effort here to address some of those key challenges. But certainly, I think I can speak for both of the committees. You know, we look forward to refining some of these bills, if we need to, in collaboration with you and your group, and that's why we're doing this, right? You know, oftentimes, these packages don't, aren't accompanied by hearings. We felt it was important, and Senator Kavanaugh strongly felt it was important, that we hear from stakeholders before taking up these bills, and that's what we're doing here. And so, I just wanted to make those few comments. You're certainly welcome to respond if you like, but I do want to especially thank you for being here.
Sure, absolutely. And Senator Scoofis, we did take a look at all of these, so when we submit our written testimony, you can get more of the details that we talked about. And I do understand that some of them do have some increased penalties, but keep in mind that when you make changes to Article 18 of the executive law, that law happens to be a law that mandates a municipality create a law. So just because you put the minimum fines in there, the judges aren't listening to them now. So just increasing the fine, we could set it to $10,000, $20,000, $1 million, life in prison. It may not necessarily matter until the message gets to the judicial system, and I guess that's where I was heading with that message. It wasn't that you weren't making an attempt. We admire the attempt. This is the first time since the early '80s that any Senate has taken that. So you are creating history here today. So I sincerely appreciate that. We would like to see that staffing may be separated out from the Budsmann legislation, only because we think that could be expanded a little bit larger. Leaving it only to geographic areas, saying you need so many per thousand, maybe not be the best way to handle it. There's a lot of other things you'd have to take into consideration. How many commercial buildings? How many multiple dwellings do they have? How many complaints they receive a year? So we would prefer to see that maybe separated out as a separate bill that creates maybe more of a focus to municipalities, that you're going to need to pay attention to the staffing levels in your municipality. So the statewide registry, you heard testimony today, it's not that we're against any of these. We are for your efforts. We truly are. There's just, we would like to work quickly with you on maybe refining these to see how we could make them work.
Senator Baier.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a few questions for you, Mr. McDaniel, also about the judicial side of things. Do you think sort of bypassing the judges and using administrative adjudication is more effective and should be expanded? I gather both of you would say yes.
You're definitely heading in the right direction, absolutely. I mean, you do it on an administrative level. You can get things handled a lot faster. You can get the fines. You can send the message to the people that you're trying to send that message to. When it's that elected judge or official that's sitting the bench, and they don't have, it doesn't matter if the minimums are set at 1,000 or 7,500, or whether it's a second or third violation. Administratively, may not be a bad way to go, and we would definitely support that.
And how do you feel about tacking the fines onto property taxes as a way of collecting the fines?
There are municipalities that do that right now, and it is a successful process, absolutely. We would be in support of that.
Let the record show thumbs up from Mr. Schwartz on both of these as well.
Absolutely. We do that right now in Rockland County. You mentioned the Rockland County Housing Initiative. That started, just to tell you about the fines, because they use the administrative judge. It went from a three-department now to a 10-department. The message is getting there, and the fines went from $5,000 now to $10,000, and then it doubles. So they're getting the message. We just now initiated with the consumer protection, which the county never had, as enforcement. And we started now with a one-man shop. We're now a two-man shop, and the message is getting out to get out of all the other unlicensed contractors that are coming in. So it does help. Administrative law judges, if we could have our own housing court, that would be even better. Take it out of the towns, take it out of the municipalities, give it to the county, and let the county do it, or put it into some type of where they don't have it. The most frustrating part is that we have people that are paid to do their job, and they're not doing it. And they're handcuffed here from the state, from the second floor in some part of this building or the other buildings, and they're not able to do their jobs. It's a shame.
And then just one other question about allowing tenants to sue proactively their landlords for poor housing conditions. Is that something that you support as well?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because they're taking advantage. You come down and you see what they have done. They have destroyed neighborhoods. I mean, at the same time you're doing this, we're having a hearing because of all the so-called, you know, hate, the distrust and mistrust, when you have a certain community that's getting everything. I mean, I find it fascinating. You try to get the New York State Tax Department to look into, how come, what can we do with the cash receipts? They don't want to be bothered. You try to get an appointment with the Attorney General to come down, hasn't responded, but you get a machete-type of act in a certain part of the community, and guess what? Everybody's here. So you talk about those who have and those who don't. So who are you going to go with? So that's, I mean, without, I mean, I'm not, there's one thing you'll see. I tell it straight it is, I don't go into the politics, but it's a lot of bureaucratic nonsense, and people's lives are at stake. And I will tell you that if anyone dies on our watch, you're not going to be able to stop, and that's the problem. You can have as much as Sarah Wallace reports and everything else, they're not doing it. And your grandfather was the best senator that I ever known and wouldn't stand for it. That I'll tell you in the box.
That's excluding Senator Scoofis, right?
Yes. That's a different generation.
Did you go further?
That's it, thanks.
Senator Baier, would you go first?
Thank you. Thank you very much for saying that, and I have the same intolerance for injustice, and agree with absolutely everything that both of you said, and especially your sentiment about people not being able to do their jobs or positions not being filled. It's inadequate government, and most New Yorkers have no idea what's even going on, and I think that's why we're here today, and I'm 100% committed to transparency and to holding people accountable.
So tell the governor to take the handcuffs of the building and state department.
I'd be happy to do that right now. So someone pick up the phone happily. I will. I'm committed to that.
Give it to the Office of Fire and Prevention. Take it out of this building codes, because they're corrupt.
Lots of corruption everywhere. Thank you for sharing that. Okay. My question is more of a hypothetical, and also, if this is something that already happens, and please excuse my ignorance, I just don't know, but as you were talking, it feels like the landscape of code enforcement, it falls mainly on municipalities, of course, that's the reality, but the landlord is not really held accountable in the sense that if they are providing housing for someone, are they required to certify that, to anybody at any time, yearly... time, yearly, biannually, whatever, the beginning of when they're going to provide housing, that the housing that they are providing is actually compliant with the building codes? Do you think that that is something that we should require? And what would that look like from landlords or from property owners who I could imagine would be really not pleased with that type of regulation?
If I can jump in, because he'll give you the other side, I'll give you my side. I can tell you, most of the buildings that are in the current court system right now in the town of Ramapo, most of their violations are no COOs. We want that rental registry to have that proof. I got inspectors that are not doing their jobs, and there are buildings, the community center that I live in my over 55, I am still waiting. Been there since 2007. No CO in the building and no certificate, no fire certificate that we meet all the requirements. Still waiting for that, and it's three years into it, and I'm a firefighter. The second part is...
Can I pause on that? Why are you waiting three years? What is the reason? I mean, what's the real reason?
Incompetence.
Yeah, okay.
And then the developer has money. They don't want to rock the boat.
Got it. It's public financing, but we're not at that...
No, no, but you don't have to pull the financing. But take it out so you can go. Where am I going to take it to? So if I go ahead and take it to the town of Ramapo, which by the way, which if you'll allow, I can't even go now to zoning planning board hearings in the villages of Spring Valley or in the town of Ramapo. I can't speak because I'll be arrested as a public nuisance because that's how passionate I get. So the issue becomes that you need to be able to take it out, give it to the people that will do the jobs. Your bureaucrats up here ain't doing their jobs. They're not. And they're going to kill people, and they're going to have blood on their hands.
They already have. Well, that has been the result of inaction.
Right.
Yes.
Senator Baik, again, and I'm not sure it's necessarily the other side. I think we're on the same side. The landlords aren't necessary, to answer your question, the landlords are not necessarily held accountable. There isn't one standard that says they shall be. We have the building codes that imply, we enforce them, they should be, but not every time that the unit is rented out or leased out. There isn't...
Isn't that unusual? Because in almost every other capacity, I mean, I'm also an attorney. If I went into court without my license renewed, I would be sanctioned, right? There are real consequences to not actually following the law, but in this instance, there's a gap, yes.
There's absolutely...
Massive gap.
Absolutely. Yes. There are small programs out there. I mean, if they receive subsidized funding or something like that, one of those agencies may be required to go in and have inspections done, but those inspections are nowhere as near the standards that you would find in the uniform code.
And then you're opening up a whole new Pandora's Box with Section 8 housing. Don't even go there. Don't even go there.
What if it just applied to private landlords to begin?
Well, what you have done here is at least we can go after them because they were hiding under the LLC. So it's a new LLC. We have traction now to get them, and that is because of what you guys are doing. So that's it.
And to me, at your level, it wouldn't matter whether they were public or not public or private.
Why?
They all should be treated the same. Those residents should be afforded the same.
I agree with that, and I also just from the realities of my first year here, know that sometimes it takes some easing into things, so that's why I asked which order would matter if it did at all. Okay.
So the other person, so hopefully you'll hear from our legislative member of our task force as well as a 16-county member of legislation here, Mr. Harkwood, because he's going to gear up and he can address a lot more into the bills. But you're doing a phenomenal job. I'll just repeat it one more time. Take the handcuffs off and leave us alone. Give it to the county executive. We can get it done. And you know how it pays for it? So pays for it with the fines.
Yep.
We take the property, we confiscate the cars, everything. I don't need you to fund it. We can fund it. Let the bad people do it.
Yeah.
I don't need your funds.
Thank you very much.
Anything else for the panel? So I will just also join Senator Scoofus in emphasizing that for structural reasons, legislation we propose at this time of year cannot allocate money. There's a budget process for that, but we were serious, what we said in the report about funding being critical, and it happens that there is an existing stream of money that is supposed to be for this purpose that we understand has been collected but has not flowed to that purpose. So we will be looking closely at that, and those who think that that's an important part of this may want to join us in advocating for that in the budget process, which takes place over the next 10 weeks. And I would also note that the bill does, one of the bills does specifically talk about the number of inspections that are necessary, and you touched on this, Mr. McDaniel, a little bit, and there are factors, a limited number of factors that ought to be considered in making the regs that would impose that, but if there are specific, you sort of rattled off a few thoughts on what criteria might be used, like types of buildings and other. If you think that kind of language ought to be in statute, we'd be interested in, you know, more formally telling us what standards might be, what factors might be relevant in determining whether they have the appropriate level of numbers of staffers.
Sure, to that, if I can. And I do have copies. So in our testimony, we not only identify some areas that might be of concern in those bills, we also identify potential recommendations of what we'd like to have seen done. But as far as the workload, again, I mentioned a couple of them, but I mean, there's many, and I'm impressed by your knowledge of our field. I can't state that enough. But there's additional things that those officers are doing, whether it's complaint inspections, plan reviews, fire inspections, but there's additional workload that these municipalities put on these local officials. They hold other hats, let's say. They could be the dog control officer as well as the zoning officer, so I do appreciate that. I want to just mention one thing. I wish I would have said it before Senator Comrie left, but he did have a question about the fire extinguisher bill, and I wanted to touch on that if I could just for a second.
Please.
I wanted to state, and as tragic as that incident was, and it truly was, very, very devastating, the current fire code requires fire extinguishers in multifamily dwellings. That incident was a multifamily dwelling. Chapter 906 of the fire code currently requires fire extinguishers. You're putting a bill that's trying to legislate the code. We have a New York State Codes Council, they have the statutory authority to modify the provisions of the code. We probably shouldn't be doing it through statute. So Chapter 906 covers everything from the occupancy type, the size, the travel distance, all of the requirements for fire extinguishers. So again, I don't want to take anything away from the tragedy, however, it was already covered in the code. It may not have been enforced. It could have been from a staffing level or an ignorance level, but they are required in the code already.
That's helpful. Just one more question. We talked about other potential forums to adjudicate these kinds of administrative forums, but to the extent this, you've both made the point that the courts aren't necessarily taking these things seriously, so you think they ought to. Is there any, I mean, it's hard to legislate, it's hard to pass, you know, we're legislators, we pass laws, but we also have oversight responsibilities and, you know, the ability to speak publicly about issues. But do you have any, I mean, it's very hard to pass a law that says judges shall take such and such more seriously. Is there any suggestions on how to alter the culture of the judiciary on this issue?
Put them into administrative judges, have housing courts, and make it the way, Rockland County, you come down, I mean, you have even acknowledged how the RCI does it, the Codes Initiative, and guess what? They have an administrative judge, and all his job is to make sure they get the fines. That's it. And long as he judge fairly, but he isn't politically put there. So he doesn't have to answer to the constituency because that's even worse. You can go into a court and you can see certain people, they'll get a low fine. If you get to another part, they're going to get nailed, and guess, and it's not equal. It's not equal justice for all. It's not. It's a shame. It should be a court, it should never have been allowed to be in that. I mean, it's common sense because all they're looking for is, you heard from the Attorney General, we only want compliance. Damn the compliance. I want them to be held accountable, and there's a price to pay. Because who are they taking advantage? They're taking advantage of two people. One is the tenants in there, and they're absolutely right, they're going to, and then once you do the fines, that's exactly they'll fear. And that's one of the things that we have to balance when we go in. But damn it, because the firefighters are fighting it and going into what will be an SRO or an illegal wall, similar to what happened on that Black Sunday. We're putting our lives on it. That's what we volunteer for. No difference in the FDNY or whatever one's paid or not, we've still got the same stuff, and that's what we go into and go for. And the code enforcement officers, most of them, I would say 95 want to do their jobs, but the political hacks that are on top of them say, look the other way. I am still waiting. You had it in your report, 201. It's 201 Route 306, 261 Route 306, 265 306, 267 Route 306. Today is January 23rd, 2020. January 4th in 2019, there was a Supreme Court of Rockland County to get an eviction order to evict the building. Nothing has been done.
And Senator Kavanaugh, there's a lot of other creative ways to do that. Administrative is one of them. We would be more than happy to work with your group to try to come up with new ways. Most recently, there was the Governor's Bail Reform Act that modified the criminal procedure law. There are some things that maybe could be done through the criminal procedure law modifications. You reduce that down for the trial-ready provisions that you just recently put into place. It might tie our hands a little bit if we have code officials that are trying to meet a 15-day deadline, but so maybe that avenue would be one as opposed to the administrative approach, but we'd be more than happy to work with you to try to find where we can make some changes.
Great. Okay. Again, thank you both very much for your testimony and for all of your work and your service.
Thank you.
You want to submit? Can you, to the staff? Is Robert McGee available? Thank you. Okay, a little side conversation here, but thank you, Mr. McGee. Is the clock ready? Okay, whenever you're ready.
All right. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Senators. Thank you for having me here and inviting me. So my name is Robert McGee. I'm actually Deputy Corporation Counsel for the City of Albany. I'm not Corporation Counsel. I appreciate the promotion, but I have to respectfully decline at this time. I want to thank this body for taking the issues of municipal code enforcement seriously. It's very refreshing to see it happen after all this time, and I want to echo the sentiments of everyone who's come here and testified before me as far as that is concerned. Speaking as a municipal official in a corporation counsel capacity, I can't tell you how excited we are to make use of the opportunities you've provided us with a lot of the zombie property legislation, for instance, and then with the tenant protection bills that have been passed recently. So I'm not sure how useful I can be to the committee, but I'm just going to dive in. I'm looking forward to walking out over some of these suggestions. I think they're really, really good. So I've been with Corporation Counsel's office for about three years. I'm in charge of code enforcement prosecutions. For three years before that, I was actually the building director for the City of Albany, and for three years before that, I was actually a housing attorney with the Legal Aid Society covering our rural eviction program in Columbia Green and Rensselaer County. So I've seen the issues faced by folks who are suffering from blight and code violations from, you know, all those different perspectives. So again, feel free to dive in with any questions you have, but I'm just going to go through some of the proposals.
Great.
So with respect to S 7288, the statewide registry, I think that's a fantastic proposal. The City of Albany has had a rental dwelling registry since 1996, and it's been extremely useful to us, not only as a municipality but also to tenants in the City of Albany. It's an opportunity for us to put our eyes on properties, make sure you don't have the very egregious sort of, you know, illegal renovations or additional, you know, the addition of apartments that we saw lead to the Black Sunday incident that was discussed. But it forces landlords to interact with the city, have someone from code enforcement come in and do an inspection on a regular basis, and that's been a huge boon to, you know, tenants and to the city. The one suggestion I would make with respect to the statewide legislation is, you know, the most effective component of our rental dwelling registry program here in the City of Albany is that inspection component. I would suggest that along with the information that the landlord provides the state, they provide some certification from a code enforcement official, certifying that that information is correct and that they've actually been to the building to do that. I believe you would be able to, I mean, there are code enforcement officials, like people who are certified through the New York State Division of Code Enforcement who would be able to do that inspection. I think the people are there for communities that maybe don't have a rental dwelling registry program that has their town provide that. And I think that would force landlords to get a third party to come in and certify that the building is still up to code and is being maintained responsibly. With respect to the information that is required at subsection four and nine to be submitted by the municipality, I can tell you that that would be a bit of a lift on the part of the City of Albany. Under Senator, under our mayor, Kathy Sheehan, we've done a lot of work in terms of improving our data management and information collection generally. We've invested in really top-of-the-line code enforcement software, and even with that software and the resources that we've brought on the problem, compiling a list, for instance, of all the open code violations, instances of harassment would be a major lift for the municipality. So if that is going to be a requirement of the legislation, when it comes time for budget season, I would strongly recommend resources be provided to allow municipalities to improve their ability to do that. With respect to Senator Brooks's suggested or proposed egress impediment law, S 1714, I think the $7,500 penalty is actually probably less than what we would be able to collect in most cases under the $1,000 per day fine that you find under New York Executive Law 381. So I would just recommend language incorporating that. I could just, I just know from my experience working in courts with code enforcement, they might look at, you know, a judge might look at that $7,500 language and look at it as a ceiling, which, you know, I don't think it should be because, you know, blocking egress is probably the most egregious code violation you could find. It's led to, locally here, there was a fire in Skin equity, for instance, and numerous people lost their lives because of that particular thing, because means of egress were blocked. So, yeah, we'll just take a closer look at that. With respect to S 1726, which adds or prohibits, I guess, the use of wood products to board up buildings, I think what the law is getting at is good, but I can tell you, speaking for the City of Albany, that we would have some difficulty complying with this. I mean, most of our boardups are done on an emergency basis. We'll get like a 911 call from a neighbor saying someone's broken in, and we have to, you know, respond immediately. What we will typically do is if the building has functional doors, we'll put a lock and HASP on it, and that usually does the trick, but sometimes the door's been kicked in or just for whatever reason you need to, you need something more than a lock and HASP, at that point, we'll use plywood. So if there can be some changes to this, we would suggest perhaps prohibiting street-facing wood. So when we go and board up a building, we're usually inside of the building, and we usually have an opportunity to board up the building from inside and then leave through the back and then board up the back. That would help. And then also, I would ask the, you know, the senators considering this, to look at alternatives to wood. Really, the best one that I have found is called clearboarding. It's like a polyurethane plastic, you know, boarding up material. We've considered requiring that in the City of Albany. We've gotten some pushback from emergency services just because it is harder to get into. You need special training and tools in order to break through it as opposed to plywood, obviously. So there really are, you know, technically speaking, a lot of great alternatives to wood. Just something to keep in mind. Another modification you might want to make on this is, you know, in the eventuality that you do need to have street-facing wood in using a boardup, maybe requiring it to be the same color of the rest of the building or be painted or just made to be less egregious. Obviously, it doesn't look great when you have that kind of, you know, when you have a piece of plywood over a front door, but there are ways to mitigate that without forbidding it completely. I just ask that the senators consider that. I had the same comment on S 2813 with respect to the fire extinguishers. That is in the state code. It doesn't hurt that it gets ensconced in state law, obviously, but the fire code, it is our... it is already there. With respect to S 3320, that wouldn't affect the City of Albany, I don't believe. So I don't really have any comment on that, but I do think it is good to put a time limit, obviously, on that kind of grace period if someone is going to be afforded the opportunity to correct a violation after they've been found to be guilty of it. Speaking to SS 4938, I think this is fantastic. This is the one that creates an increased fine for code violations that pose an imminent threat to life and safety. I really, you know, I champion this idea within our own standard operating procedures in the City of Albany. If you have very, if you have those sorts of code violations, the egress blocks, the no heat in the middle of winter, the no hot water, things that really do threaten life and safety, there should be increased penalties and fines. My one suggestion would be to incorporate into this language a prohibition against a landlord collecting rent or obtaining a warrant of eviction during that time period. The language would be to the effect of if the local building department has determined that this is active, the landlord just can't collect rent at that point. And that just makes sense. They're providing a product that is unusable at that point. They shouldn't be allowed to get money for that. And would that language protect tenants who report it? You know, everyone who's testified here today has touched on this fact, but it is the case that tenants are scared to go to code enforcement because they're scared of retaliation. This is a good opportunity to start including language in just our code enforcement laws generally that protect them. And I think, you know, in terms of what you said earlier, Senator Biagi, easing it in, this is a great first step in doing that. For imminent, really, really bad code violations, we should put a hard stop on evictions or the collection of rent in those situations. I really like the idea of the state code ombuds person. I can tell you, from my experience working with rural evictions, a lot of those folks have absolutely no recourse to code enforcement authority. And the things I saw in Columbia and Green County would break your heart, and when I was a legal aid attorney, I absolutely would have availed myself of this kind of, of an office. Those communities, for whatever reason, probably resources, but maybe it's just lack of training or unawareness, they just don't consider it a priority or they don't consider it at all. And those, the folks in rural situations are particularly vulnerable when it comes to code enforcement for that reason. So having someone from the state who can come in and correct that and speak on their behalf would be, would go a long way towards improving their situations and addressing the problems that New Yorkers are facing. The additional training requirements that are at S 7291, I think this language is great. A lot of the difficulty we've had is with getting training done in a timely manner. The way the New York State Division of Building or Code Enforcement does it now is that the training happens over the course of six months in consecutive waves. And that puts us in a situation where we are potentially hiring someone five months out from the beginning of the next wave, so we can't really even, we can't even have them on the street for almost a full year after they've been hired. So if we could somehow get more resources to them so they can provide more training, we can onboard our code enforcement officers more quickly, get them up and running. Anything we can do to do that would be helpful. The language regarding kind of the automatic firing of an officer who's not maintained their yearly training unless they've received certification or an extension of time to get that training, if we could walk that light and language back a little bit. In Albany, we have faced situations where you have very good code enforcement officers for whatever reason, you know, I'll just speak specifically, there was one officer, his mother was in Puerto Rico during one of the hurricanes. He had to go down there. He misses the yearly training. Under the language here, I'm not sure, I mean, we might have been forced to let him go even though we were able to find work that he could do for the office that was, that was productive and moved the mission forward. So if municipalities, municipalities could be given some leeway in that respect, that would be very useful to us. Speaking to S 7292, which would prohibit owners with open code violations from purchasing properties from land banks or from the county, what have you, I like that language. I would ask that, you know, I would suggest that the committee consider adding LLCs and language that would prohibit someone who owns property under multiple LLCs from kind of taking advantage of that, that position. That's just a problem we face in the City of Albany. We have many landlords who will have a separate LLC for each one of the buildings they own. Luckily, we know just from our day-to-day practice that it's the same individual, but legally speaking, under the laws it's written, we might not be able to stop that person from buying property from a land bank. All right, so those are my thoughts. I kind of did an information dump on everyone, so if there are any questions.
Great. We appreciate your thorough and if we let you go over a few minutes because you're being so specific and thorough about all the bills.
Thank you.
And, you know, thank you also for, this is the second time we've had City of Albany testifying before these committees, and we've been very impressed by the resources that the city has brought to bear on these issues. Do you have, I'm going to let Senator May go first.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, just picking your brain a little bit because of your experience with rural and upstate housing. Do you see or specific issues upstate and especially upstate and rural areas that are not being addressed here or that you, are there additional ways that you could see helping with the rural code enforcement issues? But also, I know in Syracuse, it's probably not that different from Albany. We don't have a ton of the subdividing a house into lots of tiny apartments, although in some of the student housing, there's some of that going on, but it seems to be different, sort of levels of neglect and disinvestment that we're dealing with.
Yeah, it is a real problem that there are different standards of code enforcement from municipality to municipality, and that's based on the way that New York State has decided to do code enforcement. You know, in terms of what's needed, I think the best thing that the state can do in terms of legislation is to empower communities that need help to advocate for it and to access resources that help them get the resources that they need to bring investment to the situations that they find themselves living in. So I think the language, you know, I suggested, for instance, with respect to the immediate or the extraordinary code violations, you know, giving tenants that right to say, you're not allowed to evict me or you're not allowed to collect rent so long as this condition is in place, that's the sort of thing that statewide, tenants are going to raise it. It's easy to wrap your mind around that. Those kinds of, those kinds of things are really, you know, where you're addressing the needs, you know, of both rural and urban tenants.
Can you speak, so Albany does, has, as you know, does have a rental registry. And you mentioned, you talked very specific about how the data required in the provision in our bill would intersect with data you're able to provide. But can you just talk more generally about the purpose and value of having a rental registry?
Yeah, so under state law, residential properties need to, under the state building code, residential properties need to be inspected every three years. The owners, I mean, within the state code, the onus is put on the owners to do that, but in Albany, we stepped, we stepped in and we decided we're going to take care of that. In Albany, our inspections happen every two and a half years, and the owners spend $50 per unit for those inspections. And it creates a situation where we get to interact with those buildings and again, make sure things aren't getting, you know, bad and spotting issues before they become a problem. And it's been really successful. And I had crunched the numbers a while ago, and I wasn't able to find them for today. But, you know, for instance, our instances of fire decreased dramatically when we imposed this in 1996. Because we go in there and we spot the things like, you know, people will have too many appliances hooked up to one outlet, for instance, and these things are not what, you know, the average tenant thinks about necessarily. So it allows us to catch those things. And if we're implementing a statewide system, you know, I think it is, it's important that we have the, you know, if we force a landlord to bring a third party in there to certify that the building is safe and that it's up to code. With respect to the information that's asked for in the current iteration of the bill, I'm just, yeah, I just wanted to communicate that it is difficult for Albany to print or generate those kinds of reports, property to property. I mean, we can, we can do it, but you're probably talking about an hour or so of staff time per building. And so if we're doing, you know, we did 1,900 ROPs last year, so if you're doing that for every single building, you know, obviously, those staff hours add up, and our folks are already stretched right thin as it is.
And there's a provision in the bill that says that if a locality is currently requiring a registry, that the Secretary of State can review that registry and determine whether it is, it meets the standard of the state registry. And if so, that registry can basically be served as the means of landlords complying in that jurisdiction. And then I guess we're contemplating that the data would be transmitted in some electronic way to the state so that it's, or made available electronically through the state. Is that, have you contemplated how, whether that might work in Albany and whether your, the data you're collecting would be sufficient to meet the requirements of this bill?
Well, the information we're collecting now is usually its owner name, property manager name, if there is one, and number of units, and then we're also capturing unit designations. But I think in the bill, they're asking, asking for, you know, with respect to the owner, history, or a history of code, of open code violations and instances of harassment. That information, we're not collecting necessarily. I mean, we are collecting it, but it's passive and it's not centralized. And we would basically, we'd need to aggregate it if we were going to, you know, submit that to the Department of, to the statewide registry. And it just, it would take a significant amount of staff time to do that.
Okay, if there are, if you do have, I mean, you understand what we're getting at. We want people to be able to go and look at a registry and determine whether this landlord in this context has a history that's problematic. If you have suggestions as to kind of information that would be, you would be able to generate sort of more directly through, or transmit more directly without somebody on your staff processing it for the purpose of complying with this law, you know, with no assurances that we would amend it that way, but we would, I think we'd certainly, you know, because Albany, I think, has done, you know, has put a lot of effort into creating a registry, and I think you are ahead of many localities. We'd be, I think we'd be interested in your feedback and how, and what would be the requirement that gets at that goal that is something that Albany, other localities might be able to comply with.
Yeah, it's a technical, I mean, it's ultimately a technical problem. We do have, we've received a grant through the Attorney General's Office to use a program called Building Blocks. I'm not sure if you're aware of it. But that, using kind of building blocks, the companies, their resources, they've been able to create a system where they can aggregate a lot of that information. We can't generate reports out of it at this point. But that would be the kind of, I mean, I think if municipalities had access to that, they would be able to. But my understanding of the way a lot of municipal code enforcement works in a lot of, especially in smaller communities, is they're not even going to be at the point where they're going to be able to provide useful information to a company like Buildings, Building Blocks, because their information is either in very, very old databases that don't, you know, produce information in a way that Building Blocks can use, or in a lot of cases, it's still done on, done by paper.
Right, and the sampling of the, you know, the four localities, including Albany, that we looked at in this investigation, and I should say, it's the team of the Investigations and GovOps Committee really were the people that did a very deep dive into how all of this works. But there were certainly varying levels of both sophistication systems, also a very different system. I think some were using Building Blocks and some weren't, but we, but yeah, again, we're very, you know, we're very interested in both creating a robust tool, but also permitting this to be done in a manner that is efficient and effective. So we would, we'd like to sort of continue that conversation with you.
All right.
I just have one other question. Just this came to my mind. Do landlords furnish floor plans that are available to the fire department, or is that, the firemen just have to guess what's inside?
Yeah, fortunately, they do have to guess. You know, when someone's constructing a building, obviously, they need to submit plans. And a lot of those are stored, we store them for about five years, and then they moved over to the County Hall of Records, so they're available there. But for officers and, you know, first responders arriving at the scene, no, they don't have access to them.
I will say, without professing expertise in this, my understanding is that in New York City, the, there are annual efforts to visit every building that the local firehouses do, you know, buildings of certain types, so that they both to check for egregious violations, but also so that they have some familiarity if they're responding to the scene. Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have a panel of Laura Phelps, Ryan Acuff, and Michael McKee. This will be, this will be digitized, this will be digitized and submitted to the Secretary of State in the future directly, but for now, we're still with paper signs.
Up to you, but you want to, you want to begin, that'd be great. Appreciate it. My name is Laura Phelps. I'm the Director at United Tenants of Albany. Thank you to the Housing and the Investigations and Government Operations Committees for their continued attention to code enforcement in New York State, and thank you all for reaching out to United Tenants to attend this hearing. I have just a couple of things that I would like to say kind of about the issue in general and the proposed bills. First, it's really great to see positive adjustments proposed for Article 7A, particularly around the establishment of time restrictions when orders for repairs do get issued in those special proceedings. However, we really need that law to apply to the entire state, not just to New York City and its surrounding counties. Tenants upstate need the same explicit right that's defined in Article 7A to be able to bring actions affirmatively to enforce their rights when there's hazardous conditions in their housing. It's not an issue that's just unique to New York City and those areas. We further need legislation that clearly and firmly addresses toxic housing conditions that are destroying the health of families who rent across the state, as well as a system for emergency repairs to remedy dangerous conditions. Over the years, I've met hundreds of families with multi-generational lead poisoning, horrible asthma, and really terrible issues breathing. The toxic conditions that both cause and exacerbate these health issues are not properly dealt with in our uniform codes and are inadequately addressed by code enforcement and health departments across upstate New York. There are existing New York City administrative codes that define mold violations, asthma triggers, and the owner's responsibility to remediate. Others establish a clear system for emergency repairs, which emphasizes owner responsibility and puts forth a clear process for municipal intervention to prevent displacements. These types of laws should be in place for the entire state and should cover issues of mold, asbestos, lead, and emergency housing conditions such as no heat, no hot water, severe leaks, or other conditions that put families at immediate risk of displacement. Tenants living in dangerous housing consistently become homeless when they make a complaint or ask for help, either by eviction, by displacement from code enforcement, or forced removal directly due to the hazardous conditions themselves. Proactively dealing with toxic housing and systematically setting up a protocol for emergency repairs to address imminent emergencies would reduce displacement, vacancy, and blight in our neighborhoods, and to me, that is good code enforcement. Finally, it's from experience that I'm absolutely convinced that it won't matter how high or aggressive penalties are for unaddressed code violations and hazardous conditions, or how much we fine-tune the court process for governments to pursue those penalties unless we implement sufficient eviction protections for tenants. Renter households in neighborhoods that are predominantly rental housing disproportionately bear the devastating impacts of unsafe housing and ineffective code enforcement. I think it's fair to say, possibly, based on my reading of the final investigative report and my other interactions with these committees' hard work on this issue, that a few of these proposed code enforcement bills are somewhat reminiscent of strategies that we already utilize here in the City of Albany. I do understand that other parts of the state have virtually no code enforcement at all. Still, I can tell you that notwithstanding the hard work of Albany's code enforcement department, I still have the same toxic hazardous properties on my caseload year after year. For these landlords, and there are a lot of them in this city, dealing with the code enforcement system is the negligible cost of doing business, and the repairs are not getting done, despite the fact that Albany has increasingly imposed notable harsh penalties for noncompliance. The loophole that I see in this proposed statewide rental dwelling registry is the same glaring problem that we have with the registry and permitting process in Albany. Landlords can still be noncompliant with these systems and evict tenants for no cause in a holdover proceeding with no barrier. These same landlords can still find yet another desperate family who's being evicted from an even worse apartment, or coming out of an emergency shelter, or frantically searching for a slightly cheaper, still unaffordable rent to be able to make ends meet, and those same families will sacrifice their supposed right to a habitable home and move into that same apartment. The cycle continues because we only implement barriers to evict for nonpayment. The cycle continues because we only implement barriers to evict for nonpayment of rent when we pass these laws, and we perpetuate landlord use of no cause holdover evictions to evade their obligation to make repairs. I continue to have eviction cases with families whose landlords are actively being prosecuted for unaddressed code violations in the same properties from which those families are being evicted. A warrant of eviction is signed at the bench, the family is thrust into the crisis that is facing homelessness, and that landlord walks down the stairs in the very same building to appear in a different courtroom for failure to comply with a notice of violation that was triggered by that very family's good faith complaint. I've watched this happen continuously for years. It does not matter how strict the penalties are for these unaddressed code violations and hazardous conditions when the tenant's right to take action is not applicable across the state, when our current system does not adequately address toxic housing conditions and emergency repairs, and most of all, when tenants are afraid to report the issues and interface with the system in the first place because they live in fear of a no-fault eviction. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Acuff?
Okay, go ahead.
We could go on the paper, or we could go right to left, whichever.
Okay. I'll go next.
Great.
Good afternoon, Senator Kavanaugh, Senator Scoofus, Senator May. First, I want to commend the Senate for the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act of 2019. Tremendous legislative victory, which, to get a little political for a moment, would not have been hap, have been possible if we had not been able to turn the state senate blue. And you are all to be commended for that great tenant victory, which has, and will, I believe, changed politics in this state on a permanent basis. And to me, the most significant part of that bill, not that other parts are insignificant, is the fact that we now have statewide applicability where any municipality, any town, village, or city in the state can opt into the system if they choose to do so. And I believe that over time, this will, even though we need changes to the way the system works and substantive changes, this will change politics in this state for the good forever. I also want to commend you for turning a spotlight on this issue of code enforcement. This is a, an issue that's just basically been overlooked for years and years. I read the bills this morning. I don't want to get into a long, I'm not an expert on this subject. I was fascinated listening to the testimony of Mr. McDaniels and Mr. Schwartz, and also Mr. McGee. I have a general knowledge of code enforcement from my long years of working in tenant advocacy. I think two of the bills stand out in terms of what I think would be most useful. One is Senator Kavanaugh's Rental Registry Bill, which I think would be a very useful thing, and Senator Carlucci's bill to impose fines where there are dangerous and hazardous conditions, which, but I think in general, all of these bills are well-intentioned, and while there might be some changes that might be made in them, I think it's a good first step. However, I think it's paramount to say that there are two things lacking without which none of this is going to make much difference. I know this is not a budget hearing, but I think ultimately, this question comes down to money. The state of New York used to fund code enforcement, used to provide money to localities, New York City as well as other localities, to fund their code enforcement programs. That was cut out in the early 1990s by Governor Mario M. Cuomo, and he did it by cutting, I think if memory serves, and don't hold me to this, but I believe it was $8 million a year that went to code enforcement. And in one year, he cut it by $4 million, and the next year, he cut it down to zero. And the legislature went along with that, and it's never been restored. And I know there are many competing needs for, in our, in terms of our state budget, but I think if you're gonna get serious about code enforcement, you're gonna have to put some money into this program, really. Secondly, you just have to acknowledge that without protecting tenants who are afraid to report bad conditions for fear of retaliation, then none of this is gonna really matter. It's not gonna work. So if we don't succeed in passing the prohibition of evictions without good cause, that's going to continue to be a problem. And I recognize that the major opposition to that bill last year was not in this house. But it's something that we feel is very important. I mean, other states have had this, New Jersey has had good cause evictions since 1974. There's really no reason we should not have it in New York. The other thing you could do is you could really give us universal rent control, as you did with mobile homeowners last year. You, in effect, gave people living in manufactured homes in mobile home parks, you gave them rent control. No need to declare an emergency, no need to survey what the vacancy rate was. Other states have done this. Why not do it for the entire state of New York? It would be a fairly simple bill to draft. Of course, the numbers have to be right. The mobile home bill, if I remember, is three, caps rents, rent increases at 3% a year with a hardship proviso. The other thing is, I think the idea of not allowing landlords to collect rent or obtain a warrant of eviction if they're not complying with an order to correct conditions that are dangerous to life, health, and safety, why not do that? I mean, that would be a weapon that, I mean, not all tenants would be able to avail themselves of that because they'd be afraid, but it would certainly give those who are lucky enough to get a legal aid or legal services lawyer to represent them, would give a huge, huge weapon in terms of forcing the landlord to actually get serious about these conditions. The idea of an administrative tribunal to impose and collect fines has been floated for years and years and years. Back in the 1980s and the 1990s, we attempted repeatedly to get an administrative tribunal for New York City code enforcement, like the Parking Violations Bureau enacted. The Senate Republicans would never allow it. It would, I think, make a lot of sense taking this out of the hands of judges. And I think another thing you might want to look at is model lease legislation, which, you know, other, there have been proposals over the years to mandate what leases can and cannot include. I mean, who writes leases? Landlord lawyers write leases. That's who creates these standard lease forms that are published. And some of them contain clauses that are actually illegal, that are violating, that violate law. And you could man, you could have a statute that would say, a lease cannot contain X, Y, and Z, must contain A, B, and C. And there are, there is model legislation that has been drafted, starting back in the 1970s, by legal services and legal attorneys that I think would be interesting, interesting to dust off. So thank you very much, and thanks for turning a spotlight on this issue. This is of paramount importance, and we applaud you for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Acuff. I'm with the Citywide Tenant Union of Rochester, New York. And thank you so much for convening the hearings last year, doing the report, and doing the hearings here, because, as other people have said, I think this is one of the most critical issues that, I could speak for Rochester, but also traveling across the state. The poor living conditions that people are facing is one of the most day in and day out, critical and horrible conditions which tie into our general housing crisis. Sometimes we just talk about the affordability crisis, which is, but it's all tied together, is the, the crisis of slump conditions. So I really want to applaud, moving forward with these 11 bills as a major start, and I want to agree with a number of things that people had said before, particularly with the expanding the Article 7A to apply to the whole state. I think this was something that we really want to change the narrative, is that these are not things that are just New York City or downstate issues. And I applaud your guys' leadership on the ETPA making that last, last year statewide. But this is a similar type of bill where it specifically says in it where this only applies to New York City, and applies to Suffolk, Nassau, Rockland, and Westchester Counties. And we think it's, it's good for everybody for a clear process for tenants to initiate as a group. If the landlords have, have code violations, if 30% of the residents are in favor, can initiate a procedure as a group in order to bring about enforcement. Tenant-initiated code enforcement and enforcement is something we've been fighting very, very hard for in Rochester, but we fought, we come up and, time and time again, against the state, the state barriers and the state law. And the city of Rochester is very clear that they don't see themselves as the, they can't be the lawyer for every individual tenant that's having major code enforcement issues. And that's why they've supported these efforts. On the one hand, I agree that people don't know the intricacies of the Uniform Building Code. On the other hand, this is an issue that is talked about on a daily basis and is a major issue in Rochester. Just wanted to share, just picked up in the train station this morning before I came, this, this was one of the key issues on the front page of, of one of the two main local papers in Rochester, were the poor living conditions. And the processes that we've been trying to go through, just two weeks ago, created a new small claims court process, thus the Special Expert Housing Part, but was still limited by the, by, by the state law and how that process could give relief for tenants. Also, lawyers are trying to find creative ways within the Uniform City Court Act in order to allow tenants to initiate lawsuits in the way, in New York City, if someone files an order to show cause, they can get into court and do the, and, and try to, on an individual basis, get court-ordered repairs. There's no precedence of that, so we're trying to create the first case law in that in Rochester. But it really should be an explicit right of action, because the city, over and over, says, we cannot do this for everybody. Now, I do think that the increasing of penalties is a very important picture, but it really has to all come together, because although, you know, Rochester probably has one of the better as far as upstate code enforcement systems, we do have, like Albany, we do have a proactive process in the CFO, the Certificate of Occupancy, where, that there's inspections. So, but in these cases, we have records and records of notices and orders to landlords where there's hundreds of violations, and the, so now that they've cited them, how do we bring these situations to a resolution? And that's not what's happening, right? And there'll be either no fines or small fines. So it's very important, if we do increase the fines, which I think is beneficial, to try our best to not make it discretionary, because what happens is, is that the city will, in some cases, pick and choose when they want to do this, when they not, how much leeway they want to give, right? But in the notice and orders, they're very clear, right? You have these, you have these much time, depending on the severity of the violation, some are immediate hazards, they need to be fixed immediately, some are 10 days, some are 30 days, some are 60 days. But these orders to repair, they expire, and nothing happens, right? So it's very important that, that there is a process to increase the penalties, but also that if they increase them, that there's some sort of way that if the code enforcement is not doing it, right, we can say, well, one of the things of some of these bills, which is positive, there'll be some sort of general oversight of the system. But what, but if the discretion is unlimited, right, there has to be some limits as a way to say, and sort of giving them more time, and more time, and more time. Just to give a recent case, we've been working with the tenants in three buildings where we worked hard to organize tenants, bring them together, and across these three buildings, there were over 200 code violations that were cited, right? But as, and we also worked with the developer to come in to help buy the buildings, renovate them, and allow at least one of the buildings to be purchased as a tenant co-op, limited equity co-op. In retaliation, right before the holidays, this landlord filed an eviction of 61 tenants across these three buildings. So then we used the new provision that just came into being in November, which is, you can't do without a CFO. Two of the buildings didn't have a CFO. So we were able to use that defense, and so, and they withdrew the nonpayment evictions. So then the next thing they did, they gave the tenants 30-day notices, right? Because they said, well, it'd be cheaper, I don't want to make the repairs, it'd be cheaper to, to remove them than to make the repairs. So in this case, it was very important for them to have the good cause eviction protection, because each protection, this is always the loophole they can use with that, is to say, we're gonna give you a 30-day notice for these tenants that were able to get all these, all these violations on the record as well. In addition, I strongly agree with the recommendation Laura made as well about instituting these emergency repair programs. We worked with the Attorney General through the City Rise Program to expand this. Through some of the tenants advocacy, we created an emergency repair program for no heat, because, as was mentioned before, the city would come in, we would bring them in, they would do the code enforcement, they would issue vacate orders to all the tenants, they'd put a notice on their door, and they'd say, call social services, right? So, so the tenants all become homeless through no fault of their own. So they created a program to come in and say, well, we'll fix the heat, bill the landlord, and ultimately, the money gets recouped in that sort of situation. And in most cases, the landlord, if they're even threatened with that action, they'll fix it, because the contractors of the municipality would be, be more costly, right? So even just the threat of an emergency repairs actually gets them to do the work that they should have done anyway. Now, we're working to expand that through the grant, through the City Rise Program to, for all major health and safety issues. So we're in the process of writing the policy with the city, but I think this is something we should consider, because ultimately, it's, it's creating an evolving loan fund for all municipalities, because they're gonna get paid back one way or another through, they put on the taxes, they collect it back, whether, if it goes in the foreclosure, if they sell, whatever it is, they put a merger apparently, the municipalities will get it back. But if there's some upfront money by the state that assists each municipality to do this, ultimately, what tenants want is to live in good conditions. They don't want it dragged out for weeks, months, through long court proceedings, long finding proceedings, these type of things. These are essential tools, but the emergency repairs is, is, if it's done right, and once again, nondiscretionary, this is one way to bring these horrible situations to a close, because this is, this is, you know, we think it's positive, some of the, the local reforms that have happened in Rochester with, that have cited so many of these violations, but these are some of the key things that we think could actually solve the issue, in addition with allowing as much possible for tenants to initiate the cases just to enforce the laws that already exist. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you all. We had, we had many hearings last year, and each of you played a critical role in making sure that the perspectives of tenants were before us, including some very compelling testimony, I think in this room actually, from the Rochester tenants about seven months ago. And, and I think Ms. Phelps, I think you appeared twice in the same day before the committee, in two different back-to-back hearings, so that, I think, there should be an award for that or something. But, so just, can we, I want to talk about, particularly about the registry, just for a moment. Does Rochester have a?
So Rochester has a building registry, and then, but most things are done through a CFO process. So there's a certificate of occupancy, depending on how many units. Every three years, there's a certificate of occupancy inspection, and then they're supposed to go through every unit. And then for them to get the certificate of occupancy, it has to be code compliant.
And is the data from the, from that process publicly available, available online?
Yeah, I mean, any, anytime, you can go on the website, through one of the city websites, and you can see how many violations there are for every property, how many code violations there are. And, and right now, there's not a, a clear yes or no if there's a certificate of occupancy, but this is something we're working with the city to create that, especially with the new law, that landlords are all required to have a certificate of occupancy to do an eviction, a nonpayment eviction. So that's something that they have a record of, but they're working with them to make it public for everybody.
So can you speak about how, you know, there are many, many jurisdictions where no such thing exists at all, so the statewide one would ensure that for every jurisdiction, either through the existing one that is compliant with the provisions of this, or just by requiring landlords direct, to directly interact with it? Can you just talk about recognizing that you and others have made it clear, this isn't a panacea? But how does that, how does that kind of tool work in your, in your kind of organizing and advocacy work, having access to a, to a registry, if at all?
Our rental dwelling registry information isn't public, so it can be pretty frustrating. We would have to foil the information or reach out to the Buildings Department directly, and there's not a clear process for obtaining that information, and sometimes it's sort of treated as more private. So you can call and kind of say, can I have a bill of health for this building that I'm fixing to move into? Have there been code violations? Who is the principal of this LLC? And maybe you'll get the information, and maybe you won't.
So from your perspective, if this were, it would be, it would be a productive step if Albany's registry, if Albany's registry data were available, or if either there were statewide registry that applied in Albany that were public, or Albany's registry served as the registry here, but it were available publicly through the Secretary of State online, that would, that would be a, a step in the right direction from your perspective?
Absolutely. We talked to thousands of tenants from across the state on our hotline, and we would tell every tenant who was about to move into a new apartment, do a search. And if they could, I think it would- And if they could, I think it would be very, very helpful.
Great.
You know, it's, the available data is very helpful for identifying problematic landlords, problematic buildings, prioritization, I think, so it is very helpful. The only thing that's missing is, so it's very hard, you know, to physically go down and get every notice and order, so the thing we've been trying to, is to make it available so people can actually see what violations are on their own building, but it is helpful that people can see that a number of violations, but then it'd just be, the big challenge is trying to get the orders and then trying to figure out if all of them have been cited and what's happening, so that's, that's the only tweak in addition to yes or no, is there's a Certificate of Occupancy, but some simplified, because they have it as a digital process, you know, they have their orders to repair, but, so people can see what's been cited and what hasn't.
Great. Mr. McGee, any, just anything to add on that?
Well, I don't have anything specific to add, except to say a statewide registry could fill in a lot of gaps. I mean, my observation over the years is that some, some cities in upstate New York have code enforcement programs that, for good or worse, are actually making an attempt to deal with the issue, but think about small towns and villages where, even with possibly state funding available, they might not be equipped to really do this, and so the idea that was expressed earlier by, I can't remember if it was Mr. McDaniel's or Mr. Schwartz, about assigning this responsibility to the county, or at least where you don't have cities within a county perhaps, might make a lot of sense. I mean, there are, a lot of these issues are just common sense, but it's more than common sense, it's also a will to do it, and the wherewithal to do it, which is why I come back to the need for some kind of state support for this in terms of the state budget.
Yeah, and I think you were here, you, I think you said that this isn't a budget hearing, but certainly, comments about the need for funding are both appropriate and well-received in this setting. We had a conversation earlier about the reasons why we wouldn't be formally considering legislation that allocates funding in this forum, because, you know, there are constitutional restrictions and another forum for that, and those hearings begin Monday morning, so we will be.
Well, I should actually take back what I said. I mean, I, we shouldn't worry about anything in terms of the state budget. After I read Governor Cuomo's budget message, he's obviously solved all the problems that there are to solve.
I would just point out, Mr. McGee, that sarcasm doesn't come across in a transcript very well, but, I'm going to ask, Senator Scoop, do you have anything to?
I don't have any additional questions, just wanted to express my thanks to each of you for being here, testimony, and particularly on the registry issue. I think you provided some unique insight that we may want to further consider before moving forward with the package, but thank you for being here and your advocacy in general.
And I'm going to not take this time to go into the details of provisions, Ms. Els, that you're discussing that are in place through the administrative code in New York City and not available in other parts, but I do want to follow up with you on more specifically about what provisions might be appropriate. And I would just note, on Senator Jackson's Bill 3320, I got here on January 1st, 2007, as an Assembly member, and I believe the Assembly had already passed the bill several times by then, and has passed it each year since, and passed it on January 15th of this year again, and I think it's fair to say that it was drafted and passed at a time when there was an expectation that it might be difficult for the Senate, as currently composed, to impose that sort of thing statewide, but I think we will, either with Senator Jackson or perhaps with another sponsor, look at imposing that, those provisions, making those provisions available statewide as well. But I would say, some of our dinwiddes has done, you know, yeoman's work in carrying the torch on that for many years.
Can I just highlight one other thing that was said? I just want to, I know this does take more work, but just to consider, as we go into the next phase of this work, is just the stuff that doesn't get cited as code enforcement under current law, the mold, the asbestos, and the asbestos exposure, and the lead. Like in Rochester, we do have a local lead law, but I think even that has weaknesses, but just in the consideration, moving forward, you know, so like asbestos, it's well-regulated for workers, right? So, and, you know, it's the vision of the Department of Labor, and people are wearing hazmat suits, and it's very, but then, in these cases where tenants feel like it's being done improperly, they're exposed, they go home, and the tenants are being exposed, they're not wearing hazmat suits, that's where they live, they can't go any other place. So just as we move forward and we create the penalties and the corridor system, that making sure that we're actually citing all the issues, and these are just some of the things, some of the, some of the huge toxins, the mold, the asbestos, and the lead, that we hope to be incorporated in the future.
Yeah, and I represent the Lower East Side, where sort of aggressive construction that may or may not be directly related to a desire to improve the quality of the building, but is often, has been related to the desire to make it very unpleasant to live there and remove the tenants, has, had been commonplace for many years, and we did convene on the Lower East Side, we called it a lead task force, to deal with, had both city and state health departments and HCR and HPD involved, and all the local elected officials, and made some progress in ensuring that there was a quick response with testing by the health department. But it is a subject of great interest, and I also would note that mold, I think, I think people have, in the past, thought of it as sort of like a quality-of-life problem, but I think people understand that it's much more so, it's very much, you know, it's a toxics problem and a very difficult circumstance for a lot of people. So I think this, some of the elements of this package, by improving the quality of the, the sort of apparatus of enforcing the codes, may get at some of those problems, but to the extent there are additional standards needed, needed an additional, you know, additional funding or legislative work to be done, we're certainly open to that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you, and to everyone who participated today. Without further ado, we will, we're going to basically adjourn this hearing, but pending further testimony from other folks, including a substantial number of people who have told us that they will be submitting written testimony in the coming days, so we will take written comments, including from people who spoke, who testified orally, if you have further written materials to provide to the committees, we will take those and make them an official part of the record, and disseminate them to the members of both committees, and certainly consider them in our legislative process. But thank, again, thank you all very much, especially on short notice.